Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Granville County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. And I'd like to thank each and every one of you for being here tonight, and thank all those who are viewing from home. And now, if we will, Vice Chair is Lotus J. Will you lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Stand by with me, please. Lord, once more than again, we say thank you. Thank you for the many blessings you have stored upon us. Lord, thank you for allowing us to be able to meet again and do the business of the county. Bless each and every one on the sound of my voice, wherever they might be, wherever they may go through, whatever trials and tribulations in their life, Lord. You know all about us, Lord, because you made us, Lord. Lord, bless our staff. Lord, just bless our county. Lord, bless us and take care of us, Lord. Lord, as we go through this meeting, God our hearts and mind, that we be on one accord. And every said and be said and done, be pleasing thy sight, Lord. Lord, bless the ones that encounters that counties that has tornadoes has struck their lives, Lord. Whatever terminals have been in our lives, Lord. Lord, just bless us, Lord. Be your friends around us and protect us and guide us, Lord. Bless mankind all over the world. Lord, touch the hearts of men from the White House all the way down, Lord. Lord, let's go with us and stand by us and take care of us. These blessings we access in thy name. Amen. Will you stand with me for a little? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, and we have an adjustment to the agenda. We'll pull item number ten, the aerial imagery contract term approval. I think there's still some details, some details to work out in the contract. So we will pull item ten from our agenda. Is there any other adjustments to our agenda tonight? If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. I trust everyone's had a chance to read this over. Is there any, any questions? Or do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any questions on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Next, we have a presentation from the Granville County Soil and Water Board. If you will, please come forward.
Cut your mic off.
Oh, okay. I'm at the Soil and Water. I'm Ronnie Burnett, and I'm chairman. And in the Soil and Water, we have three elected officials and two appointed official. I'm elected official. Most of the time, I run the same year that the president run. And then in two years, we have two more that run as elected officials. And then we have two appointed. And they are, we appoint them here, and then that name is sent to Raleigh to have to be approved. Okay. As you can see up on the board, Byron runs the office. He's the conservationist. And if we get into questions tonight, I can't answer. He'll answer them for you. And also, if you got, as we go through it, I'm gonna hit the high points and tell you about it. But if you see stuff up there that I don't cover, you can ask me. Go ahead. It tells you about our operating budget. We have two county employees that the county pay for. One's a full-time, which is Byron. Then we have a part-time secretary. I believe she's called administrative assistant or something like that. And, and it says that the board of supervisors, we are basically in charge. But we have to follow rules, state presenters. So everybody thinks they're in charge, but you're never in charge. And then it tells you a little more. Go ahead. They got it listed up there, the ones on the board. And we got it pretty well around the board. Most of us been on that quite a while. I think I've been on a total of twenty-eight years. And, and the least one, I believe, was seven years. The pay is not that great. All we get is, is traveling money for meals. So you don't do this job if you're doing it for the money. But for me, and I think I speak for the rest of them, I'm concerned about the soil and water. I was raised on a farm. And one of the things that bothers me the most is if I ride by a field and see a gully right down through the middle of it. That I just saw. And nowadays, they talk more about water quality than they do soil erosion. But if you think about it, they tie it together. If you got a gully with water running through it, and the water's all red, then you got soil washing away. That's not water quality. And so it all ties together on that part of.
Okay.
And what we do is try to provide local assistance to people, farmers mostly. Sometimes we get people calling from town. They might have a question. Sometimes they call us. Sometimes we can help them. Sometimes we can send them in the right direction. And all, now, we have money we can help farmers with sometime. But that's not all we do. Sometimes we give them technical assistance. We give them advice that they can have. So it's not all about money for what we do. And it talks about we have to follow state and federal regulations. We can't just do it the way we want to do it. Just because we're supervisors and all, it's gotta be done the way state is, the way they do it. Let's say the state comes out with a program I don't really like. But when, if somebody comes in and asks for the money, and the rules say that they get it, then I've got to vote the way the rules go, not my opinion. And also, and the next one is carry out comprehensive conservation programs and non-regulatory. We're here more to help people than to go out and say, well, you done messed up. My personal goal is for a farmer or anybody, if when they see our truck, the soil and water drive up and say, oh, no, what have I done? I want them to say, well, say, well, maybe you can help me do this. That's, that's my personal goal, and I think that's all about goes. And then the last, form nationwide by enabling legislates passed by Congress. And this grew out of the Dust Bowl, and I'm sure y'all heard the Dust Bowl back in the thirties. I sure don't remember it, but I've read about it. And, and all of this started through Congress. Maybe this is one of the good things Congress did, is start the soil and water. And of course, okay. Now, the services we provide. We have two no-till drills that we rent out to farmers. Or maybe I shouldn't say farmers. Maybe somebody just got a couple of horses, and they want to do that. The first one was given to us by, the money came from the North Carolina Debake Trust Fund. I believe I'm correct on that. And the second one, we got, and I think most of the money come from, from North Carolina. But we had to provide twenty-five percent of the money to buy it. And it's really been used quite a bit, and it's gonna be a little bit showing about what we've done there. And this picture here is where this summer, they closed out a lagoon. All the water been pumped out, and they got down to the very bottom. And I don't know all the rules about closing out a lagoon, but you gotta get all the manure out. And in this picture, they had to take a backhoe and skim the manure that was on the bottom. They spread it, and then I think they had to take a road scraper and spread it in the field. And now you go by there, you won't know it's a lagoon. They leveled it back out. And just for information, I believe it's only one dairy left in county, in our county, one dairy. And we done lost quite a few in the last couple of years. So it's very, and they have, we help them what we can. Dairy deal with a lot of the divisional water, no, in Raleigh. They, they have a lot they have to do, more than the average farmer far as new management planning. And we help them. And you see down at the bottom, future drone photography and mapping. Well, they came out with another program. If, if you had, we had to pay twenty-five percent, wasn't it? Thirty percent, and they'd pay the rest to get a drone. Well, we didn't know the future. So this put us, so we, we decided to do it, and we'll see what we can use. We know that when we have to go out and check some projects that we've done, it'll help speed it up. So, and Byron's in the process, gonna get his license to work that. But as you can see, that's one of the things. Any other? Okay. And this tells you how much money we've been obligated out. And through the county, and the first one, and the second, oversolder insulation, ten complete best managed practices, and it tells you the amount of money. And then the rest, and rented the no-till drill, and it tells you the acres now, the amount of drills we put out. And that's, I think that's been a very good thing for the drills with it. Now, the first one says gain job approval for additional ecological design. And that's basically talking about Byron. He has to have certain amount of schooling to where he has job approval for do this or do that. Let's say putting in turkeys would be one. He's working on getting a job approval for these lagoon closures. And so that's our goals for the year. That was, that would be his main goal. It's our goal, because we need somebody to do that, too. Assist the produce and close it out and inactive, and that, that is harder than you think. We have to get the people from Raleigh to come out when we're doing it. So you just don't go there and do it anytime. You gotta coordinate those people to come out and, and work with it. Work with part of the age to promote farmland preservation. We can do that, and we, we try. We can get a student, send them every year to state college during the summer, to a conservation workshop. And all, and is that it? Okay. There's one thing I want to say. When I first got in this job, one of the things I thought was the most amazing, in that office, we have, we have county employees. Now, this was when I went on, not now. We had a county employee, we had a state employee, and we had a federal employee all working together. How many times you see that happen? And in that amount of time, we have a federal employee that covers a couple of counties, not just one in our county now. But that's pretty good, that all of them been worked for the same goal of trying to do this. Now, they got their programs, and we have our programs. And we'll help them sometime, and sometime they have to help us. And that's about all I have. Got any questions? I've been, like I said, doing this twenty-eight years, and we talking farming. I can talk, now you ask me to talk about something else, I'll be shaking, but I can talk about farming. Anything else, y'all?
Chairman, I have one question. Ronnie, and this might be for Byron. How many waste lagoons would you say we still have in Granville County that are either active or inactive? And are they mainly hog lagoons, or what type of lagoons?
So, yes, sir. We have one active dairy left in the county that has a lagoon on site there. We just closed out one inactive dairy lagoon this past year. We've got one we're looking to close out this spring as another former dairy. And then our one hog operation, I think the last animal's left of the site in December. So they have a primary and a secondary lagoon on site there that, hopefully down the road, we can get some funding to help close those out. Because once they are out of business, they still have start, stop, pump regulations they have to follow with the Divisional Water Resources. And so as some of these farmers get up in age, you know, that's, they still, when they're leaving from the farm to the family, that's regulations they would still have to follow. So they're trying to get those closed out, so there's no headache on the, on the family moving forward.
The hog pile, is that the one up in northern Parton County?
Yes, sir.
And we've closed out some before this year. It's some down the road. It was, it was over towards Crete Moore somewhere, right next to the falls of Newst, a couple of years ago. I remember they cleaned, cleaned out one, and then they got land to do something with. So that's something we've been working on, but it's now seems to be we're doing more than in the past. But we can't do it anymore, because we don't have but one dairy in it. And like I said, that dairy and one, one others. And it, it's quite extensive, getting every thing to work together to clean out a lagoon. You gotta have people there from the state. What divisions that state, most time they come out?
Divisional Water Resources.
Divisional Water Resources and all. And say, and when you get your permit for the lagoons, you'll be able to do it. No, that probably still had to come out. But he's working on so he can help them with the plans and all. Yes.
First of all, thank you for coming and presenting on behalf of the board tonight. I, I was thinking that, I'm aware that a number of commissioners have been doing some ride-alongs with the sheriff's office recently. And I want to put in a plug for Byron. He's also a good tour guide. He's taken me out on a number of different, kind of short road trips to look at some of the BMPs they're working on, the best management practices, look at some of the projects they have underway. Look at the seed drill, for example, which I might use at some point. And so I recommend him as a tour guide if you're, if you're interested in some of these sites and practices.
And I was, I was telling Mr. Gooch a few minutes ago, I remember selling cows here. Right along here was a farm about this high, and the cows would come to a door down and go out now. So I don't know what I would have brought, but anyway, I remember all that. And I don't know how many others remember that, but anything. Okay. Thank you. Oh, by the way, there's one thing. I appreciate all y'all do for us. We've had Mr. Griffin now, Mr. Gooch, and we've had some other people from the board to come into our meetings. Called liaison. And we appreciate it all, what you do. I know we're a very small department, but I appreciate it. And everybody's always worked with us very closely, from the board to the county manager and everything. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And I can tell you, Chairman Burnett is a farmer, a true farmer. And you have to, in farming, you have to go when the weather's right. And he's the only chairman I know of that has run a meeting from the cab of his combine and did it well, too. Thank you. Okay. Our next item on our agenda tonight is a public comments. And we didn't have anyone sign up for public comments, so we'll go right on to our appointments. And our appointments start on page one oh three. Okay. Hang on, I'm not prepared. Okay. One oh one. And this is the, to make appointments and reappointments to the Granville County ABC Board. A local board has the authority to manage ABC store operations, including buying, selling, and transporting alcoholic beverages. It adopts rules with commission approval, hires and fires employees, designates a manager, and requires employee bonds. The board issues permits, ensures law enforcement compliance, borrows funds, acquires property, invests surplus funds, and disposes of property per state law. It also carries out other duties as required by AC, by ABC law. One member is appointed from southern Granville County. One member is appointed from central Granville County. And one member is appointed from northern Granville County. Mr. Bill Crosby from southern Granville County has resigned, and we're looking at a new appointment. Do I hear an appointment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer the name of Steve Owen.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any questions? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor of filling the vacant seat with Mr. Steve Owens, please signify by saying aye. And all those opposed likewise?
Aye.
Okay. Eyes have it. You, you want a roll call vote?
Not necessary. We'll wear my voting pattern with ABC.
Mr. Chairman, whilst we own the ABC, whilst we own the ABC Board, and that was the only board I think we have in the county, we have a three-member board. I think we need to look at going to a five-member board on all our three-member boards.
Yes. Mr. Vice Chair, we are working on that as we speak.
Okay.
The county attorney is also the attorney for the ABC Board. And we, he is working on the language and the proper, the protocol that falls under the ABC commission by the state. So we are looking to go to a five-member board.
Anything else? Then we'll move on to our next item, which is our Board of Adjustments. And the function and duty of the Board of Adjustments is to hear and decide appeals from and review any order, requirement, decision, or determination made by an administrative official charged with enforcing the Granville County zoning ordinance. This board shall also hear and consider any and all requests for variances and conditional use permits from the public at large and arguments regarding zoning district boundary interpretation. Wayne Overton, who holds the District Two seat expiring in April twenty twenty-five, is resigning and will serve through March of twenty twenty-five. So District Two, do you want to sit, put forth a nomination?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Victoria Brazier has been serving as an alternate from District Two.
Okay.
I spoke with her, and she is very willing to take the District Two County Board of Adjustment seat. So I would like to put her name out there for nomination, please.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second? Is there any questions? If not, we'll go to the, go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
So now we need a?
Alternate for District, for District Two.
I will turn that over to another district if someone else would like to have that nomination, or if they, another, have the board would like to do that. It does not have to come from District Two.
We need to take a look at that. Some of them do require that they come from a certain district, so.
We'll defer to our county attorney.
Okay. So we do have to have one for District Two?
I didn't say that quite. I said that I gotta take a look at it, because some of them do have to come from certain areas of the, of the county, as I recall, like from the ETJ of some of the local governments and that type thing. So I know, for example, we have people from, I believe, somebody serving from the Crete Moore ETJ, somebody serving from Oxford. So we just need to take a look at, at that. I wasn't prepared to offer an opinion on that tonight.
All right. Well, let's table any appointment until we get a ruling from, from our attorney.
There's no problem with him elevating her to be the voting member. The question is how to backfill that alternate position.
Yeah, so let's, let's table any motion on the alternate position until we get a reading from our attorney. Okay. All right, then we'll move on to our next one, is the Granville Health System Board of Trustees. And the purpose of the Board of Trustees shall be to determine hospital policies with relation to community needs, to see that proper professional standards are maintained, to coordinate professional interest of the hospital with administrative, financial, and community needs, to direct the chief executive officer of the hospital in carrying out policies, and to provide adequate financing and control of expenditures. Commissioner Timothy Karen has resigned, and there is one vacant seat. And we had a discussion last meeting about how that seat could be filled. And our attorney went over the bylaws with us, and we determined that, that seat, if it's filled by individual, it would have to be a voting individual. It couldn't be a non-voting individual. Would you like to go over the bylaws again to help us here?
So the seat, um, I think the easiest way to say it is currently there's a vacant voting position. There was a discussion about whether a non-commissioner could be put into the non-voting ex officio position. And that position is reserved for a county commissioner. So what you have is a, you have a voting position that can be filled by a commissioner or a non-commissioner, but you also have a, an ex officio position that's reserved for county commissioner. So the board can choose how to proceed with that.
Okay. And, and based on that, you know, we've had some commissioners that have appointed people to the board and leaving us with a commissioner down on the board. Technically, if I'm following this right, you know, you could have two commissioners on the board, and one of them would have to be ex officio if the other commissioners resigned or stepped down and appointed a citizen in their behalf. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I followed what you, what you said.
Okay. For instance, when David Smith didn't run for reelection as, as county commissioner.
Right.
He became a citizen on the board, which was currently, which was previously filled by a county commissioner. Commissioner Karen is stepping down and appointing an individual to that position. So technically, you could have this to happen several times in a row, and you end up with two commissioners on the board, and one of them voting, and the other one non-voting, in order to fulfill that obligation of the ex officio being a commissioner.
If the board chooses to appoint a non-commissioner to a voting position, that could happen?
Okay. That, that scenario could, in reality, could happen. Not likely.
Well, it could if, if the board votes for that position. And what happened with Mr. Smith was he was a county commissioner and remained in the same position, and no longer became a county commissioner. So he went from being a county commissioner on the board to a citizen on the board. But this situation is different. The board's making an active choice to who to appoint to that, that position.
And that basically was an active choice to keep Commissioner Smith on the board as an individual.
Right.
Nominated him, I believe, is what happened.
Right, yeah, this is. Yeah, I mean, at one point, though, he was a county commissioner at the time he was serving, and.
He was up until the time Rob came on the board.
There's nothing that states any certain number of county commissioners that need to be on the Board of Trustees. The bylaws do make clear that there's at least one ex officio county commissioner who serves. And there are some reasons that we wouldn't want for more than a, that we wouldn't want a majority of the voting members of the board to be county commissioners.
And I believe the bylaws limit the number of commissioners that can be voting members. Is that correct?
I don't think so, no.
It doesn't?
I, I think you, I think you can have, under the bylaws, full contingent of county commissioners be voting members. I believe, in fact, at one point, we, we nearly had that at a time when the county commissioners wanted to assert more control over the, the hospital board. The concern with having more than, having a majority or more of the board be voting county commissioners has to do with a tax requirement. If the board is going to issue, the Board of Trustees is going to issue certain bonds. I don't think that's an issue right now, but if, for example, you all decided you wanted to go over the, you wanted to go over a minority of the board being county commissioners, I would want to vet that carefully with bond council before you did it. But as far as going up to, you know, full, up to four, four voting members who are county commissioners, I have no concerns about that.
And, and the reason I'm bringing this up is, it's fairly complicated. And I want to make sure the entire board understands the process and understands, you know, what the bylaws state. Okay? Well, now that we've got that. Okay? Well, now that we've got that out of the way, Mr. Karen, do you have, Commissioner Karen, do you have any recommendation to fill your seat?
I apologize that my resignation was going to cause such a kerfuffle. I believe that Mr. Jacob Rogers from District Six would be an outstanding appointment to the Granville Health Systems. He brings a plethora of things and ideas and contacts that would be beneficial to both him and our community.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second motion.
Oh, we've got a second in two places. Okay. Are there any questions before we go to the vote? I trust we've gone over the bylaws and everyone understands, so we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed likewise? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you for your patience while we kind of sorted the rules and regulations out. And now our next, our next appointment is to the okay, library board. I skipped a page. Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have an individual that has applied for to fill the board's seat vacancy in District Three.
Okay.
Michelle Willis, and I would at this time like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Michelle Willis to fill the vacancy in District Three.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second in two places. Is there any discussion on the motion? Then we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it. Motion carries. The District Five seat is vacant, with the unfilled term expiring in January 2026.
I do not have anyone at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we move on to a Veterans Affairs Committee. And the purpose of the Granville County Veterans Affairs Committee is to advise the Granville County Veteran Service Officer on issues concerning veterans and their families, and make recommendations to the county manager and the Board of Commissioners on how the county can better serve our county, our veterans. And the District Seven seat is open, and I do not have an appointment at this time. I am working with AJ now to come up with one. And now, the spouse of a veteran's seat occupied by Lynette Brisher expired in February of 2025. Do we have an appointment for the spouse of a veteran's seat at this time?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I will nominate the spouse of a veteran, Lynette Brisher, and I will also nominate an at-large seat that is currently occupied by Ann Williams. Both these individuals currently occupy these seats, and I'm recommending they both be reappointed.
Okay.
Second. Do I need the second, both of those appointees? Second.
Okay, we have a second. We'll just roll these both into one vote. And any questions? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed likewise? Eyes have it. Motion carries. And the other at-large seat is vacant. And this is, this was the Moses S. Cash American Legion Post 161 in Crete Moore representative is vacant. Does anyone have a nomination for that seat at this time?
We don't, and that's been a difficult seat to fill, but we'll continue to work with that organization to see if they can find a candidate, and AJ is in contact with them. Our veteran service officer is also in contact with them as well.
All right. Well, thank you.
Just FYI, Mr. Chairman, on that, as a member of that post, the meeting night's conflict. That's why you're having a hard time getting the member.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Clerk, I believe we have another vacancy as well. It's not highlighted in yellow, but...
Yeah. The vacant at-large seat, yes. Yes. I covered the one down here. I didn't cover the one higher up there. That seat expires 2/27, but it's vacant, so the term will be through 2/27.
I have a nomination I'd like to make, please. Bradley Allen Oldenberg for that seat, please.
Okay.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions? Then we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it. Motion carries. And Commissioner Williford, thank you for bringing that to my attention. And with that, that pretty much concludes most of our business on the agenda tonight. And now we have our county manager's report.
Nothing for open session, but I do believe we have two economic development closed-session items.
Okay, thank you. And our county attorney's report. I believe you got a couple of things for us. Mr. Ren?
I do. So you have on the agenda tonight two orders granting special, major special use permits. The first one is the Jones Road matter. This came on before the board on February 3rd, at which time the commissioners held an evidentiary hearing for a major special use permit submitted by Tower Co. 2013 LLC to construct a 300-foot guide wireless telecommunication tower on Jones Road. The proposed Tower Horizon is a tenant on the, at the top, would include a fenced equipment compound and be located on property owned by Thomas Jamison, which is owned AR-40. After holding the hearing, the board approved the major special use permit. The attached order granting major special use permit formally documents this decision for final approval. As required by statute, we'd ask that you approve the order if you find it acceptable.
Okay. Mr. Ren, can we do these both together, or we need to do them separate?
I'd rather you do them separate.
Okay. All right. Then we're we're entertaining a motion to approve the order granting major special use permit on Jones Road. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve that, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any questions on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Now, we entertain a motion to approve the order granting major special use permit on the Lucy Everett Road and Enon Road project that's already been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is one that was approved on February 3rd as well. You held an evidentiary hearing for a major special use permit application submitted by Tower Co. 4B LLC to construct a 190-foot monopole wireless telecommunication tower on property owned by Alan Daniel Jr. and Carol Daniel. The property, which has frontage on Lucy Everett Road and Enon Road, is identified as tax map number 099 202650523, and is owned AR-40. You all voted to approve the order, and our documentation of that order is attached. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? If not, we entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that we approve the order granting major special use permit.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions on the motion? And then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed likewise? Eyes have it. Motion carries. And now we've got presentation by our county board members. And first up is our vice chair, Commissioner Solotus J.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know what it is at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rob Williford.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mark Griffin.
Yeah, just got a couple of things. Recently attended Agriculture Extension Quarterly Meeting. I just want to say what a great job I think those people over there doing Selena McCoy, the new extension, head of the Extension Office is doing a really good job. All that staff is really working hard. Johnny Coley still running the Master Gardener program, which is extremely good program. If you haven't had the opportunity to attend that, I advise everybody, whether you plant flowers in the yard, or whether you have a big garden, or whether you're a big farmer to attend that, you'll learn a lot. Wendy Tatum over there is also doing a lot for our community insofar as like the Farm to Frige program, where they carry food over to the local libraries and put it in refrigerators and post it on Facebook. And if you want to see how fast people will come get that food, just watch when Wendy puts it in there. She also is responsible for the Farmer's Market over here in Oxford, and she's doing a lot to help the underprivileged people and the older people in our communities that have food disparity. So I just want to let all those people know how much that I appreciate them and advise you, if you want to attend that Farmer's Market, they're going to start doing it down here at the old Oxford Armory out there. The city of Oxford is helping to sponsor that, so please go out there and visit those farmers. The other thing that I did this past couple of weeks is I went onboarding at Granville Hospital, where I'm an at-large member there. Things that the hospital is really doing, our county should really be proud of. Adam McConnell is doing a great job. If you want to see what that hospital is doing, I ask you to go out there. He will give you a tour. They are putting in all-new imaging equipment. That's the plan in the very near future. They're also making a waiting room for the maternity ward there that is much needed. The hospital, if you haven't been to Granville Hospital in a while, go out there and look. I was amazed. The hospital is really progressing by leaps and bounds, and Adam and his staff are doing a really great job. And the last thing is, I never thought I'd be riding around in a police car at 12:30 at night, especially in the front seat. But I had a great opportunity. Sheriff Fountain asked me would I like to come out and ride and tour the jail and do a ride along. I had no idea, ladies and gentlemen, what I was going to see and what I was going to be out there in our public highways and byways. But it was an eye-opening experience. I just want to say how much I appreciate our sheriff and our deputies, ladies and men out there that are out there keeping us safe. A lot of times when we at home laying down, going to sleep, they're out there looking out for us. It was really amazing. If you've never done it, see Sheriff Fountain. I'm sure he'll fix you up and let you ride along, and you'll certainly be amazed. I happened to be riding around. One of the deputies, Mark Harrison, who I think is also a trainer and a K-9 unit handler. And it was amazing to see that dog, ladies and gentlemen, in process when he alerted on a car, and we found some things in the car that shouldn't have been in there. It was really, really, really a great experience, and I want to thank the sheriff and all his staff for letting me go and letting me attend. I really appreciate it. It was, it was really an eye-opening experience. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. And now Commissioner Kozart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought I'd let somebody else try that first ride with the sheriff first, see how it goes, and then I might see if I can get in on that later on. But thank you, Commissioner Griffin, for letting me know it'd be a good experience. I do appreciate Representative Davis having one of his representatives here. And you mentioned cooperative extension, Commissioner Griffin. That digital program for our seniors, surely something that I did not know was being accessed as much and that many people using it, and it was very gratifying to hear. The State Association had some committee meetings last week. One of the things they talked about in the General Government Committee was this issue of homelessness, and they just said, well, look around your communities. It might be that there are some hotels no longer being used, that there may be some effort that could be made to have those come up to speed to help with the homeless situation. And also participating on the Public Education Committee, I was very happy to hear about the $50,000 beginning salary for teachers. I'm so happy that our school board, along with this board, endorsed that, and it caught feet over there. Someone has put that out, and I think it goes to show that things that we submit and propose can really make a difference, and I was very happy to hear that that was done. So thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. Commissioner May?
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Kozart, actually, that was Ms. Hayes from District Five, who put together that letter along with her school board and did catch fire amongst a number of school boards and counties, and hopefully it will come to fruition.
Yes, sir.
I too, the litter program is gaining momentum. And we've asked the, I actually, for the board's education, I asked the county manager, we discussed each of you all about how we may be able to fund that at a very miniscule level. The schools are ready to begin a campaign on a slogan and a piece of signage. I think it would help. So, but it is gaining momentum. I think it picked up tracks. The sheriff's office and other law enforcement agencies agreed, along with other municipalities, agreed to get fully involved in that. So let's hope that it takes, moves forward, and maintains momentum. I too did a ride along with the sheriff's office, and I want to appreciate the opportunity. I had a good time. I'd like to say it's been a while since I've been out there, and so, but it's, some things never change, unfortunately. But I want to thank, I rode with Deputy Parrot. He was extremely professional. I just really admired the way he wore his uniform. I did, he actually showed me his GoPro, which, again, this, this board has agreed to work with the sheriff's office in getting cameras placed in our cars. It's critical that they have them, along with the updated body cam, so that's a good thing. So I'm going to move something, Mr. Chair, if you'll allow me. And Mr. Ren, I want to address something with you and the county manager, if I may, at this time. I'd like for the clerk to enter to the record the Oxford Ledger. I'll provide you a copy of the paper, the March 13th to 25th edition. And it's titled Sparks Fly as County Reveals City Is Illegally Resoning Properties For Development. And so, as I read that article, I was dismayed with the conversation that took place in the chamber that night. And so with that, I have concerns, you know, as commissioners, I know that Commissioner Williford has been working really hard with Congressman Knott and Tillis and Bud's office on trying to get funding for, for the airport. And so we can add facilities, and we can add additional hangars. What I'm disappointed with is that, not disappointed, but I have some questions, and then and then I relay my disappointment to the county attorney. I'm concerned by the fact that, that there is potential, could be a potential encroachment, and I don't know, Mr. Ren, whether or not, and that the impact, if it's not done correctly, and the loss of the use of the airport or the ability to extend the airport as needed could cost the county or the county overall $15.3 million to the community, according to a gentleman that provided testimony, or not testimony, but provided statements at the Oxford City Council meeting. I'm also concerned that during the process, that the people that proposed the development were unaware that there was an airport nearby and that there was a certain FAA form to be completed. I also found it discouraging that during the process, that Mr. Conas, the attorney, I think, representing the county in this notification, was asked a series of questions regarding the statute concerning rezoning and annexation, and to the point that he was stated this, and just give me a moment to find it, because I'm going to read some comments here. The statutes are very clear that annexation rezoning can be done together, but not, cannot, cannot do rezoning prior to annexation, he stated. I think if you just pause and think of that very basic level, the level, the property before you is currently subject to county zoning ordinances, police power, and has not been annexed. Conas advised that the matter had been previously addressed with the three attorneys from the city of Oxford in response to the question from Mayor Nurse, city attorney, and Tom Burnett asked it could be answered in closed session, so forth and so on. And obviously, flustered Mayor Nurse asked Conas about prior rezoning, saying, don't the county know what's going on? You see our agenda? You know we're rezoning. And he continued his attack, saying the county never came forward and said, city, you're doing something... doing something wrong, effectively placing blame with procedural error on the county. I'm disappointed that that engagement took place because I happen to believe and this board was well aware of what we've talked about regarding some matters. But I'm just concerned that it's not the county's function to, to deal with that type of situation at that point when the municipality is dealing with it. Here's my concern, county attorney. Are there any, what are we doing to protect the airport and to ensure that the airport does not become encumbered by development? By the development? What are we currently doing to ensure that the, that the airport's not being encountered by any, encumbered by any development? To protect that investment, and let me say this before you answer, Mr. Ren, because we've just invested a lot of money into Triangle North and that airport is significant to the further growth of, of all the industry that might be coming in there. So this is a much bigger picture for commissioners on this board than, than I think that, I appreciate Mr. Conas stepping in on regards for the county's representation there, but I just want to make sure that, and I think all our board members are very aware, this is a significant matter.
Thank you, Commissioner May. You said a lot of things tonight and so I just want to go through a few of them. Wasn't expecting this issue to come up, so if I don't do it very well, I apologize. So the, the first thing is, I want to be clear that the paper, the article in the paper was accurate except, to my knowledge, except for one, one issue. And we didn't communicate to three attorneys for the board. So far as I know, there's only one attorney for the board and that's Mr. Burnett. We communicated on March 5th following conversation with Mr. Burnett to city attorney Tom Burnett, city planning director Cheryl Hart, and city manager Brent Taylor. And I copied Mr. Cummings on that and just advised him of our concerns about the annexation that was taking place. I subsequently followed up with Mr. Burnett on that because the last thing I wanted to appear in that meeting was that the county was playing gotcha with the city. That's not at all what happened there. We became aware as I was looking into this issue for the airport. I became aware a couple of weekends ago that there was no annexation that had taken place that would allow the rezoning. And I just want to be clear, I think we've covered that with the board, but before you can rezone property, you have to have jurisdiction over it. And there are two ways that a city could have jurisdiction. One would be extraterritorial jurisdiction, which I believe, the map is not terribly precise, but I believe a sliver of the Hunt Farm did, but the majority of it did not. And so far as I know, none of the Perry Farm was in the ETJ. And so that's one way you can get jurisdiction and rezone a property. The other way would be by petition by annexation that would be filed. And that, one was filed for the Hunt Farm but didn't go forward at the time that the property was rezoned. That was not on the agenda the night it was rezoned. And then with the Perry Farm, so far as I know, one was never filed. It was not on the agenda for hearing at all. So those were our concerns, is that it created a situation where if people believed that property was being rezoned by the city, they would start coming to the city for the development approvals when in fact, there was no legal authority for that. So that was why we thought it was very important to clarify it and when, after I inquired further, after we sent our original email communication to the city attorney, city planning director and city manager, that's why, as I had advised some members of this board, I felt it was important that we put that on the record so no one got blindsided by. With respect to the airport height ordinance, with respect to the airport issues, I was engaged by the airport to also express concerns about the fact that the city does not appear to have any airport height restrictions. In our letter that was handed to the mayor and commissioners last Tuesday night, we requested on behalf of both the county and the airport authority that the city consider an airport height restrictions before it rezoned, before it legally rezoned the property. And that would apply both to the Hunt Farm and the Perry Farm. And so with an ordinance like that in place and with the developer being made aware of and following the FAA Form 7460 process, so far as I know, there is no legal restriction on a house, for example, something the height of a house being built in the area of that development. Certainly concerns were expressed by people there that night that as residential development gets closer and closer to an airport, there becomes political pressure put on an airport to, to, to close because citizens began complaining. But I'm not aware of at this point in time, any legal reason that a residential sized structure couldn't be built. Certainly things like water towers, cell towers, cranes, if a crane were brought into the area for the development, all of those things could present an issue. And, and certainly, I think anyone buying a house would want to know they were in the glide path for the runway for an airport. But after the investigation, so far as I know, there's nothing that would restrict residential construction in that area unless FAA comes back as a result of that Form 7460 and, and raises concerns. But I do think it's the type of thing that if the city is going to develop in that area, they need to clearly adopt a airport height restriction ordinance and, and the zoning jurisdiction wishing to develop in that area should make sure that they have the information back from that 7460 FAA form before they approve the zoning, in my opinion, to make sure there are no, no restrictions there.
So I just want to be clear on something. That, that property, the property they're talking about that's, that may encumber the airport for this discussion, for their discussion, is that currently in their ETJ?
That property is not in their ETJ. It's not in there.
So how would they, are you asking them to do some ordinance work or are you made suggested do some ordinance work outside of that scope of that development? Or do we need to ensure that we do, if it's, do some ordinance work within, within the county?
You have an airport height ordinance as long as it's in the county's jurisdiction. The airport height ordinance applies. And so that's why it's never been an issue. I don't think, well, that's why it's never been an issue. What we ask is that if they're going, if they're going to go through a legal annexation process where they annex that property, that contemporaneous with the annexation of that property, when they adopt zoning regulations for that area, that they have airport height restrictions to protect the airport. Is that clear?
Yes. Just for the board, when I read, when I read this, I just appreciate Mr. Conas working for the county on behalf of, of making, of enlightening the board. Thank you for how you've enlightened the board. And I thank Commissioner Williford for the additional hard work he's doing on trying to get the additional hangars and the water and out, out there along with some of others working with our congress and congresspersons and senators. But I just didn't, to be frank, we didn't like the idea on how the, our attorney was addressed and how it somehow was procedurally our era when in fact, it was not.
Well, and I'd like to just address that a little bit too because when I ask someone who is working with me to do something, I try to do it in a way where we have laid a groundwork for an honorable way to handle it. And I believe we did that. And I don't really appreciate the tenor of the comments that came back to him that night. I didn't think it was appropriate considering the lengths we went to to make sure the town was informed of those issues ahead of time. Comments were made that the city has traditionally not annexed property and then rezoned it. And I can't say that I've done an audit of what the city has done, but I haven't found another instance before these last two where that, that was the case. So that didn't appear to be accurate information based on what I saw. But again, this isn't the county going out and trying to tend to the city's business. This is a county becoming aware of a situation and trying to prevent something that could cause harm to people buying the property and, and cause confusion in the development approval process.
And my final comment on this, Mr. Ren and county manager and to my board members is that we've invested a lot in the Triangle North and I want to make sure that we've done all the appropriate reviews and anything necessary to make sure that we protect that airport out there that will be a vital piece to that, to that park out there. And thank you for your time. Anything further, Commissioner May?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Karen.
I'll cut mine in half, Russ used all my time. I just want to say, I appreciate Commissioner Griffin's comments, especially around the hospital. It's eye-opening if you haven't had to use their services, how many services we actually provide and the quality that you get in care that you perceive there. From a community-facing standpoint, the health system had their ambulance chase annual, I think 11th annual ambulance chase this weekend with nearly 500 participants, which is outstanding, I think, from a, a community event like that. But they have the Fun Walk, the 5K and the 10K. So next year, a couple of days ago Saturday, put it on your calendar, there'll be another, the 12th annual ambulance chase. So I look forward to that, that event. It's always, always good to see folks out for that. Appreciate the board's indulgence with my absence at this meeting two weeks ago. I was up in Washington for the National Association of Counties' annual legislative days. Depends on how things looked personally for the election as to how the mood was. It was one of the larger conferences that they had, so they had us crammed into briefing rooms like sardines. I brought back a stack of stuff, so if anybody wants some legislative packets. I was particularly interested in the PFAS regulations coming down with the counties and cities' water authorities that we have membership in being passive receivers. There's counties pushing hard nationwide to make sure that we don't get the, the short end of the six, so to speak. But one thing that was the common theme was in DC at this point in time, just basically thank them for all the good that you've gotten from them before and understand that there's probably no more water in the well and just tell them how you used what you already got. So that was one of the, the reoccurring themes. There were some folks who had not spent some money they have gotten and clawback was one of the things that they were talking about. If you hadn't led a project or want to build a train somewhere and hadn't really gotten anywhere, that the funding may be going away. So that was one of the things that if you hadn't used it and used it wisely, wisely, you may be in trouble. But one of the other things on the conference was, everybody wanted to know where Commissioner J., Commissioner Kozart and Commissioner Him in were, just about everywhere I went. Went from Capitol to Capitol on the way back, went from Washington to Raleigh to meet with the governor's office with some folks from some towns in the southern end. And we have a good friend in the governor's office and I just wanted y'all to know, she asked about Commissioner Kozart, Commissioner J., is Amber Harris, formerly with the NCACC, is now Governor Stein's legislative aide. So I've got her contact information for y'all and we'll share that with you. So good things happening from that front. In that meeting was also DEQ representative along with our legislators. So that was good. But on the note, be aware that Representative, excuse me, Congressman Brad Knott has got his, some of his legislative aide folks in, in the STEM area. They published their calendar. They're there, I think it's every other week they're gonna be hitting, but they're working on if you've got a social security issue or a veteran's claim that you've got, any congressional action for, that's what they're in a district for. Initially, people thought it was a town hall style meeting and came and shouted at them for about a day, but then people figured out that they're actually there to assist people filing claims and do work and, and have action take place instead of just being there to be yelled at. So that's all I've got tonight. Appreciate all of you. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Commissioner Karen. Appreciate all that you do. You mentioned the ambulance chase. Like to congratulate Liz Karen, who won her division. We're not gonna say what age group, but she won her age group in the, in the chase. So congratulations to Liz.
The 10K with a smile on afterwards, I don't understand that lady.
Well, thank you. Yes. And Attorney Ren, I know I've asked you a lot of questions tonight, but I, I've got one more. And, you know, we're talking about annexation near the airport and, you know, rezoning near the airport. Should there be some type of buffer zone for future expansion or would that be, have an adverse effect on property owners?
I'm not sure I'm prepared to express an opinion on that. I think that certainly, from the airport's perspective, the more protection you give them, the, the more they would like it. But I don't know that I've got a, an opinion that I'm ready to express tonight on that. I think that would be a conversation with the airport engineer. They have, I believe it's Baker Engineering engaged on that, on airport issues in general. And I think there's a, a technical answer generally to what the buffer zone should be and that type thing. But clearly, there need to be height restrictions, both for the sake of the airport and, and people building structures on it. You've got a glide path going into that airport that you need to, need to protect.
Okay. Could, could you do research on it and work with our county manager to kind of come up with any suggestion that we may look into or?
I asked Mr. Carver.
Or the suggestion may be to leave it alone?
Sure. And again, that's, that's outside of a lawyer's technical expertise. I can tell you how to handle the zoning part of it, but I, I think what we need to do is engage Mr. Thomas, who's the airport chair, and Mr. Carver, who's our representative, and, and ask them to engage their engineering firm to come up with any additional recommendations about any restrictions or buffer zones.
Okay. Thank you. And that concludes my remarks. Is there any other matters to come before us tonight? If not, entertain a motion to go in closed session with a five-minute recess.
I'll second.
It's a move.
We have a second and we have a motion. Any discussion? I hear no questions on the, on the matter, so go to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed likewise, the ayes have it, motion carries.